Great, thanks Jesse. All right, welcome everybody to the August 21st Town Board Meeting and preceding that, a public hearing on the revised subdivision review law. And, oh, hi Jonathan. And before we get started, I will lead pledge to the flag. We'll be doing privilege of the floor after the public hearing. So with that, I'm gonna, it's 7:03, I'm gonna open the public hearing for comment on the revised subdivision review law. And I will have to I'll have to ask the people in Zoo if they intend, if they're intending to speak to that, so. And, so with that, I will open it and Barbara, did you want to speak at the public hearing?
Um, I guess I, it wasn't about the hearing, it was just a different comment, so I didn't realize it was at the end. Around how, around when would it be?
Okay, okay, so hang on a minute, and I'll get to you when we, after we close the public hearing.
It'll be five to 10 minutes.
Yeah, let me do it.
It won't be too long at all, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's what I'm anticipating, so. So with that, I will see if anyone in the town hall wishes to speak regarding the subdivision review law. Seeing no hands. Okay. Well, with that, I will close the public hearing on the subdivision review law, having received no comments. I do believe we received an email comment that we can consider later. We will not be voting tonight.
Did that just come in?
Pardon me?
To the email comment?
I just saw, I just saw my email open briefly and it came in briefly, but yeah, I don't, I don't think we can deal with it.
Right.
Tonight, so. But it is comment offered for our consideration, so.
I see, I see it.
Great, so with that, the public hearing is now closed. And I will open the business meeting and opportunity for privilege of the floor. And since I previously called on Barbara, I'll I'll call on her now. So Barbara, would you like to speak?
Yes, um, should I put the video?
She's talking.
Okay, so, um, my question is about the, the woman at Rootwork Herbal who's been harassed. And we heard about this from the Caroline Farm Day when her friends spoke, and then we've heard about it from neighbors, and then it was in the, on the cover of the, at the Times. And we're just concerned, you know, and we were wondering if the people on the board have heard about it and have any ideas of like, how the town could help, how people could help.
Okay. Thank you Barbara.
Okay.
I don't know if people want to offer thoughts now, any, any thoughts? I, I, first I'll say Barbara, yes, we have heard about this for a little while. It's most unfortunate, it's a, I think, I, I'm not gonna be able to tell you anything you don't already know, since you've heard about it and read the news articles. It has you know, it's, it's, it's been brought to the attention of the authorities of law enforcement, and yeah, I think it's, it's regrettable, I, yeah, so I, I don't know if anybody else wants to address the issue. I will say as far as I mean, there, there is a declarative statement in the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, the very first point in the in the 20-year vision about inclusivity and civility. And I think, you know, it's obvious that we all endorse that and, and hope that for our community and promote it in our own, own behavior. So. If anybody else would like to.
Well, I, I mean, I'll just say that obviously we're very, very disturbed about what we've heard.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think most of us, not all of us, didn't know about it until fairly recently. But the, the town board itself has no policing authority. We don't have a police department in the town. All policing is done by the sheriff and or the troopers. The town board is independent to the town board. And we do understand that this matter has been brought before the town court by the sheriff and the DA. And that there was determinations brought up there, but because of our, our independence from the town court, I don't feel comfortable speaking on their behalf. And I also know that at the agricultural celebration, Senator Leah Webb also heard about this. And my understanding is that she's discussing it at the state level. So, so I think that things are actively percolating. And in terms of, other than our expressing strong, strong sentiments of, of support on the one side and deep disappointment, to put it mildly, on the other, I, I think that that's what we can, that we're able to do as a town board. And hopefully talk, continue to talk to our neighbors. We have had some other neighborhood disputes that have been brought to our, our attention, none quite as severe as this. And I think we do try to act as discussants when possible. But this is, because this is a police action and involves the courts, it's, it's really out of our purview to do anything official. I, I hope that that helps Barbara.
I guess, I guess I was wondering, I mean, I know that there's already been, you know, arrests and I was thinking of it more in the terms of like neighbor support or, you know, community support. I, I realized that the, you know, town board can't, you know, isn't the police, but I guess I was thinking of it more as like, if there was any kind of community support. I, I don't really know, I was just, you know, been trying to brainstorm. I don't know if the town I, I don't, I don't really know, I don't have experience with this, but I was thinking of it more as a, like a community support. Because it, I think it would be a terrible shame, you know, if, if she did move. You know, if she just got so frustrated that, or, or so scared that, you know, she couldn't go on it, and that seems to be what she's talking about. It seems like it would be a shame for Caroline, so I, you know, I, I'm not exactly asking for an answer right now, I'm just saying people are talking about it, people are concerned, and, and maybe there's, you know, and some thought that could go into it, so. I don't, I don't need a specific answer right now. So.
Thank you Barbara, yeah.
I, I wanna thank you for bringing this up and just let you know that I think we're all upset about this, there's been a conversation about it. And I think too, I can't add to what Tim said, there, it's, it's a legal situation right now with the sheriff and the courts, so that's working through. You could I, I have talked to some people in the community, and I mean, you could reach out to you know, the family and, and ask them if there's any way you could support them. I'd also just like to read, this is from the comprehensive plan on the, what we envision. People of all identities, including but not limited to race, gender, sexual orientation, age, religion, disability, national origin, economic standing, or veteran status are safe, welcomed, and valued. The supportive and neighborly ethos of a small rural community is extended to all residents as the town recognizes the value the diversity of all identities brings. The town is actively engaged in anti-racist initiatives and policy to guide town decisions. So that is our goal and our vision, and I think we all are working towards that.
Great, thanks Kate, Jonathan.
Okay, okay.
Bates, Jonathan Bates has a comment, Barbara.
I, I, I just, I'm new to the board and this, this is all good education for me, understanding about what our role is in the town as board members. Personally, I've been, I'm acquaintances with Amanda, I, I've known this has been going on for years. I would, I think my recommendation is, is that, that there's been a, a core team around her since very early on. They're doing a great job, I would trust that they're help, helping and supporting her or family the best that they can. I wouldn't necessarily say reaching out to her directly is the best way to go, I think. If any, any, any of the media directs people in certain ways, I would go in those directions first. I do know that she's put out a request for support monetarily because she is considering leaving at this point because she hasn't been able to find other solutions. And so she's, she's actually fundraising to, to, to be able to buy another house. And then she's decided that that's one of her best courses of action, and so I think the best way we can support her now is maybe, she's asking for that, is to support her in that way. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you Jonathan. I, I just wanna, I my reaction, and I understand exactly what you're saying, but I, I agree with Barbara that I just, it's, it's a shame that, that she would feel compelled to leave and I, I would hate to lose her, but I, I totally understand the difficulty, so. Okay, thanks everybody for your thoughts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you Barbara, thanks so much. So, I'm not gonna get up because I think I saw Frank Frodo sign that sheet over there, so Frank, did you wanna speak?
My next?
Yeah, you're next, yeah.
I came tonight with the intention of issuing a criticism of the town board, with the exception of you.
Well, you can criticize me because I'm on the board now, so I'm part of the team.
But, but there's a but. I changed my, my approach. I came to offer help. July 15th was not kind to the town of Caroline with the destruction and whatever that a lot of us went through for several days, not just Slaterville took a hit, Brooktondale took a hit, a lot of folks up on the hill took a hit. The need for an emergency plan is never more apparent than it is right now. When I was a county legislator back in 2006, we instituted a procedure with the various townships, and I went over some of this briefly with Mark during that week after July 15th that appointed the town supervisors as the lead person in the town for emergencies. And requested that the individual towns develop an emergency plan and an emergency procedure. Don Barber was supervisor at that time, and to Don's credit, he began to develop a template for that. I suspect it's somewhere in the archive of the town. At the very least, Don may have a copy of it someplace. If it wasn't for some support from, from me anyway, from the Slaterville Fire Department, I think we would still not be able to get out of our driveway or out of our home. But the reason that I wanted to offer some help, and I know if I'm mistaken in this, please correct me, but Beth told me that she had a conversation with you.
I had a conversation with Greg about it.
With, with you.
Oh.
And maybe I'm wrong.
But, okay, but I also talked to Greg.
About developing some method or some outline or something. I would urge the town board, and I would be very willing to help if you want that help. That's issued on behalf of the Slaterville Fire Department, and after accident or after incident report that I believe she shared with the town.
Yeah.
I know, I encouraged her to share it with Dan Klein. I've spoken to Dan Klein, I've spoken with the folks at the Emergency Services Department, and there are some very good points in there. And I would encourage the town, you folks, to really get going on an emergency procedure, so that there's some leadership that takes place immediately for some help, or at least knowing what to do and who to call. Not that you folks have to be out there cutting up trees or directing traffic or whatever, but someone has to take the lead.
So I have a question about that Frank, if, if, if I can, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, whatever.
Someone has to take the lead and precipitate this, even if it's to set up a, a temporary incident command center, which is what we had, what we had essentially at the Slaterville Fire Department. If, I mean, Beth was great.
Sure, I, I definitely appreciate it, but.
And I, I don't know how much time any of with all due respect to you, any of the four of you.
He's one of us.
No, I know, but he wasn't, he wasn't here, he's brand new.
Just, he was just.
You're welcome to, I hope you participate.
Part of this.
We all have different tenures on the board, and I, I think that, that whole plan preceded any of us.
I know, I think.
And there is a plan there.
But, but I, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
There is a plan there, I looked at it.
We asked for it, but we were told it wasn't.
No, Jesse, Jesse showed me a plan for the county in the
Well, I'm not talking about the NIMs report, I'm talking about the actual protocol instituted by the town of Caroline municipal group, you folks, as to, it, it could be something as simple as Mark calls hypothetically, Mark calls Beth Harrington and says, this is the list of people you need to call, set up an incident command center, call I C A, blah, 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 whatever the it has to be a template someplace, so that people know what to do.
So I'm all ears, I'd love to learn about this.
Bobby Spencer, to his credit, went around and tried to help where he could. One of the snafus that developed, if you were out on the Slaterville Road, that hit us at 6:30 at night. There was still traffic, thank God, it wasn't a weekend where the students were coming back. As we've all experienced, I can't get out of my driveway, I could eat a sandwich while I wait for the traffic to break the last few days here. But Bobby at least had whether he was dispatched or did it on his own, at least tried to help with some road control.
Isn't that his job? I assumed that was his job.
I would think.
Yeah.
I think so.
His job, so, so that's, yeah, we're depending on him to do it, and he did it, and that's great.
Okay.
So what's the problem?
The problem is you need to have some emergency services. Bobby is not empowered to go and help people like Kim Holmes, who had a tree come down on our house, or what's her name, down here at the Bed and Breakfast, that had trees, there were trees down on the Boyceville Road, tree right across the road. If it wasn't for Bill Kitty's, there'd still be a tree over there.
So I, I'd love to talk to you about this Frank, because, you know, I wanna know how I can help with this.
What would you?
I, I, I had no knowledge of any of this, so electricity was out, internet was out. And I'm thankful for our three fire departments and our highway unit for their responses. And it sounds like they coordinated things incredibly well. And if I can help, I will.
Well, you, you know, with all due respect, there needs to be some leadership.
Well, can I ask a question? Would the fire departments be comfortable with the town board taking leadership over an emergency situation? My understanding, as long as I've been on the board, is that the fire departments much prefer their independence regarding emergency situations and their ability to intercommunicate with every, with themselves, and with our highway department, which was very, very hyperactive to this event. It is true that we were all in a very similar situation, we had no power for two days, many of us had trees down. And, but we also, we also knew because we could see and we could hear that we were being taken care of by our emergency services and our highway department. So I guess, just the question is, how far would the fire departments be comfortable with?
The town board.
We need to, we need to find that out.
I need to say something else, Sam.
And, and can I address Tim's?
Sure.
Sorry, we need, you're, you're right, there needs to be some definition of who does what and, and to what level. As you said, you don't want somebody intruding, we're not all equipped to do nice things for work. I mean, nobody wants to do that, but someone should call to report, there's a pole down on the back street. And maybe, maybe somebody, maybe a resident did.
I'm sure they did.
But there needs to be a, in my opinion, there needs to be a central command of somebody to filter the information. Bob Spencer, I don't believe, has the authority to close roads. In addition to, one of the problems that
I think he does have authority to.
Yeah, excuse me, one of the problems that erupted here was that because of this transformer being out on this corner, I'm sorry, on this corner, where Crumford is, there was no definition as to where they could direct traffic to, because we didn't know which roads were closed.
I have to interrupt you now, okay?
Can I?
Well, could you finish quickly, please?
I can be done in two seconds.
Okay.
I would appreciate it if you do something and get some coordination together, and I'm willing to help, Beth is willing to help. If you read, and I'm sure you did, if you read the after incident report she put out, I did not see the one from Brooktondale. I did not see the one from Speedsville, perhaps you folks have.
No, we haven't.
No.
I, I didn't see them, but there needs to be some coordinated effort to, to address what you're, what you're saying. In addition to what's going on in Slaterville, we need to know which roads in the adjoining towns we could direct traffic to, because if traffic, if you can't get across a particular road or get down 79, for instance, if trees are down, as they were, and Bob Spencer does not have the authority on, on 79 because it's a state road. At least that's my understanding, he has authority on town roads. So, anyway.
So your point is well taken Frank, I think this would be a good conversation with D O V R and T C O G to, to, to figure out what the process is, we, you know, I wanna learn some.
We, we could start, or you could start, right here. What the other towns are doing is what they're doing, if we can.
So we're gonna do something different?
But I think something in our town is
Okay.
should be done.
Okay.
So can I?
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Yeah, you did cut me off, but I'd like to speak now. The, the part of the problem is, we all, none of us had electricity. I had no phone service, I had no cellphone service, and so I'm confused like how we would all, you know, how you imagine we would all come down here and communicate, when people, we were in exactly the same situation as, as you were. And I know that Bob has shut roads because he, he had to close Speed Hill one day because a big truck got stuck.
Speed Hill was a town road?
But, right, but I still think it's not unreasonable for us to assume that our highway department and our emergency services are also communicating with the county and the state police without the necessity of us calling at calling and saying, hey, you do this, we know that they can do their jobs. We know that they are very well equipped, and as far as an emergency plan, you know, I am working on an emergency plan for the buildings here. But this is a different emergency plan.
This would be a town law, I mean, in Beth's, in Beth's writer was a surprise to me, perhaps it was a surprise to you folks too. There's no generator at the town barns to make sure the gas pumps are working.
They have a generator now.
They do have one now?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And again, I think that is Bob Spencer's responsibility.
Well, it, it could have been
We did not know, so.
Yeah, right.
It could have been recognized, that's, that is not a new problem, that has been a concern, that's been an existing item.
Well, people have to, you know, I believe, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do believe, if it's a problem, he has to come to the town board and say, I need this, I need this thing. We can't spare it out, go and say, hey, you got everything you need? I mean, I, I do think people have to take responsibility for, you know, they have their particular responsibilities.
But, but Michelle, it's a, it's a responsibility as an elected official. Have any of you?
As is he, by the way, as is Bob, so.
Has, has, have any of you been around to assess any of, any of the particular? Well, a lot of it's cleaned up now, at least I think.
Frank, we were all driving around the town that day assessing everything. So I think, I think your presentation has been really helpful, because it's a lot to think about. And we appreciate it very, very much. But I, I regret this, this, this objection that somehow we're at fault, and I think we need to move along with the meeting now personally.
Can I address one, one item that Michelle brought up?
Go ahead.
About communication. There are backup systems, now you're gonna laugh when I tell you this, okay? I still maintain a landline.
So do I, and it doesn't work when the power is out. When the line's coming out.
You, you need, mine works.
Yeah, mine doesn't because it's hooked up with my internet, it's through Frontier, soon as they upgraded my internet, which is the only way I can get internet, is through Frontier, by the way. They said, sorry, your landline will no longer work when there's a power outage. So yes, I have a landline, I have a cellphone, I have battery powered, light bulbs now. I have all that stuff, and there's, you know, no way I can communicate to the outside world if we're in a situation like we were in.
My phone's out.
Well, that's great for you.
So anyway, I, in, in back in the day, I viewed orange juice cans with a string, and they, they work all the time. But your point is well taken, I definitely wanna know if there's a responsibility I have here, and we'll look into it, so.
Yeah, thanks for, for mentioning this, actually, when that report came in and I read it, I had thought about the importance of this, but didn't kind of click in my head about my responsibility now, as now being on the, the town board, and I, I, I think it is, it
You're admitting that you're on the board, right?
I'm admitting that I'm on the board. And thank you for mentioning that, that there might be a document that Don might have created, I, I wanna look at that just to, just for history's sake and see what it might, or might not say.
It's, it's in, I, I read it in Jesse's office, it's quite, it's excellent, it's great, I don't
I didn't know it was there, so.
It needs to be updated or, or, you know.
I recollect, that was done in 2006, at the behest of the county, when I was elect, on the county legislature. It was only a template, but it wasn't, to the best of my knowledge and recollection, it wasn't a full blown plan. Don began to put the pieces together and it would be a good place, I think, to help get started.
Yeah, just briefly, a number of years ago at a scout. Gathering of lots of troops, New York State came and gave gave presentations. Uh, about what to do in an emergency situation, including backpacks, you know, with like, you know, blankets and food and things like this. Um, and that might be an idea to do an outreach like that.
Oh, good idea. I I keep an emergency back in my car. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Call me if I can help you.
Okay, great. Thanks so much.
My phone works, but.
Okay, good. I I did see all your trees down, so sorry about that. So I wanna move on and put next on the agenda. I wanted to add, Chris Swoski came tonight to help us. We've been considering how to utilize this ten thousand dollar. Um, NYSERTA award. And so Chris offered to come tonight and talk with us, so I'm putting him first up here so we can address that promptly. We did talk about, um. Yeah, so we've, we've sort of eliminated the idea of an electric lawnmower for a number of reasons. It doesn't really work for us, at least right now. Um, and I'll just start by saying, I think the most and I think the. The most viable options that are on my mind right now are. U- using it for heat pumps. Either in this building or at the highway barns or to fold into our envelope improvements here. So I'll just start with that and I guess, does anyone on the board wanna say anything else? Jonathan?
Nice to meet you. Um, yeah, I actually came and did a little poking around last week and I went in the basement in the attic, um, having my. Having my uh, building science goggles on. I did, I don't know if I mentioned that, I did that for many years. Uh, with an organization that does energy retrofit fits and. Without drilling into the wall to see if this is true, my sense is that there's an old foam insulation. Not cellulose, not fiberglass, but foam that was offered back in the seventies and early eighties that is no longer. Very much offered in in this scenario for these kinds of walls. And the problem with it is, is starting to to decompose. And I think that someone mentioned in our network that there was infrared down on the walls at some point and that there was gaps. With infrared that hold hot areas in the walls and. It makes sense now that it wasn't cellulose, it was this foam degrading and falling. Um, it kind of shrinks and crumbles, especially if rodents get in, they'll just kind of break it up. Long story short. Um, it's, it's probably gonna add cost to doing the walls. It's gonna have, there's gonna have to be removal costs that we didn't foresee, most likely, because it's really hard to work with. Um, and there's probably specialized companies that remove it. That's something to consider and I'm wondering if the ten thousand dollars now might. Need to be added just for dealing with this old insulation, because it's in the attic too. It's under the, they they put it down and then the cellulose was added on top. And so if you go out there, you can actually, if you reach through the cellulose around the hatch. It's it's just down below and it's.
It needs to be gotten rid of.
Well, maybe not in the attic so much, but definitely if you if you remove any part of th- this side or that side of the wall. Sheathing, it's gonna come tumbling out and. It's not gonna be easy to deal with, because it's powdery.
Well, cellulose would do the same thing, right?
This is even worse. It's like, it's like airborne, like it's like a loose powder and it starts to degrade.
How would they get it out? Would they vacuum it out?
Probably is gonna be the only way. So just to say that, that that we we, I think we had talked at one point about doing it, uh. Do like blow door tests and do do kind of air exchange stuff. But I don't, I don't think we should do that.
Not a good idea.
Cause it with the vacuums, it probably wouldn't get into this space so much, but but it might. It it might affect the test in in ways.
That may be why they didn't do it.
It's po, it's, I I don't think they did a good enough job. They probably shouldn't have mentioned it in the report if they knew. The insulation that was in the walls or the attic. What? The reason I know this, because I went to the basement and you can see it starting to fall in some places.
It's like Christmas decorations.
Yeah, that it's, the cobwebs are like catching it and it's kind of falling. So anyway, long story short, there, I think there are other ways that that we can better use that money than um. Doing a blow door or air testing or or that will all be part of any kind of energy upgrades we do. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Chris, you wanna just weigh in what we look for?
Yeah, so um, the the CEC grants um, are kind of restricted in what they can do. I know that there are other. Like historic preservation projects that are ongoing with this building or being scoped. Um, the good news is that the energy audit, that's what I was just taking a look at, which was done for this building. Did only look at really wall insulation. It doesn't look like they did too much exploration of. Uh, attic or basement. Um, I think that's probably just because they had a limited scope and sort of a limited timeframe. Um, but because the wall insulation is a recommended measure. Uh, the ten thousand dollars could be applied towards, uh, you know, replacement, you know. This this grant uh, at this level gets paid out as direct to voucher. So what we need to certify to NYSERTA when we apply for it is that we have a solid enough. Plan that is energy related that we're going to use it for. So we can say, in good faith, right, and we're not like misrepresenting, but. We could say that it's going, will be ten thousand dollars put towards the wall insulation. And if that ends up getting spent just pulling some of this stuff out or as part of the bigger job, that's all stuff that we can kind of. Roll up together. Again, because the audit recommended that, it's an eligible use of funds. Again, it didn't talk too much about, uh, as far as I could see, and I just, I only got it today. Um, it didn't talk about the basement, it didn't talk about the attic. Uh, um, if you were gonna engage an insulation specialist, you know, radiation specialist. Anyways, to do a whole building, you could take the ten K and apply it to that total cost because you would end up doing the insulation.
Yeah, I think that's all we're gonna do too with the historic.
So that's. And that's already on the um, table, uh, then that's, that's a pretty straightforward, um.
Yeah.
Way to apply the money. Again, it gets paid out as direct to voucher. Um, we can't sit on it forever, but NYSERTA cuts the check and then if we need to wait and have. Historic preservation go on first before, you know. The timeline's not quite as tight. They're not gonna like come after you for like receipts necessarily.
Could we have the delayed check issuance so it doesn't go stale dated? For a nice, or they would, or they would probably just, they would, they would send us the money once we set the justification?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'd have to show that it was used at some point.
No, that's, so that's, uh, that's where I come in and actually my colleague, uh, Mike Brown, uh, is chair. We work together. We, he does this for Sky River County, but he's chair of the uh, Energy of the County Caroline. Uh, I think he's the chair. So that's, that's kind of what we do is we can help writing up the application to NYSERTA. Laying all of this out, making sure that the money can be used for this type of thing. Um, so that's the the direction that we wanna go in. Uh, and Mike and I had a brief chat and it didn't sound like there were any other project types that were like really hot that people were talking about. Um, so this is what we'd like to do and absolutely start getting those materials put together uh, for application to the state.
Jonathan, you mentioned possibly the heat pumps. Is that, was that a recommendation, upgrading the heating system?
Yeah.
In the reports? That to me is equally as important. It's just, that would might be the later.
Right, that's, that's my thought.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and and the reason that's my sequence is. That. My, my real hope is that if we do this right, the envelope improvement here. We don't even need the heat pumps here in this building. And for the highway barns, that's also gonna be down the line when we rebuild the building, so it's kind of. I like, I really like the idea of folding it into this.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's true.
Yeah, it's really great.
Yeah.
Um, and then there are, yeah, so I, again, I can get started putting those materials together.
Do we need to pass a resolution in that regard tonight or no?
That's kind of up to y'all. Um, I, I mean, I'm some of the corporate extension staff member. So I don't know if you have to direct me, I.
Yeah, or you would have to submit such resolution to NYSERTA with or no?
So, uh, right, so what we do, uh, the process is, we can use the audit as the sort of quote or estimate. So we turn in the audit that says, uh, wall insulation. I think the cost estimate they had in there was like twenty-eight. Um, so we apply, we say, okay, look, these engineers believe that this work is gonna cost about this. We're rolling it up with all these other, we wanna apply the ten K towards the cost. Uh, of this insulation, which was an identified efficiency measure. Uh, what that allows us to do again is be a little bit flexible because. In good faith, we're committing to using the ten K towards the insulation without necessarily having to say it's gonna hit, you know. This wall, it's gonna, right, don't have to be necessarily that specific with it. Um, uh, and then, right, and so I'll metric. So, uh. That's an application workbook, uh, you know, a real dense spreadsheet. Um, and then it's a letter of commitment, uh, signed by the town supervisor.
Oh, okay.
Everyone can review it. Uh, that essentially says we commit to putting this money towards this project.
Oh, okay.
Um, so we kind of have all the constituent pieces.
Okay.
Again, it's like whatever your process is, uh.
I would say that our process would be for a board resolution to authorize the supervisor to sign the letter of commitment. And so whenever you need that, that you would need that when you submit it, right?
Uh, yes, our due date is, I think October third.
Third, yeah.
Yeah.
We can do it at the next meeting.
We can do it tonight, right?
Or tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
So that's, that's, yeah. Um, yeah, that's where we wanna go. I can, I can, I can probably get that turned up uh, this evening when I get home.
And and it's okay to to pair this with our historic epicure grant?
Yes, yeah, because we're not, um, what's the word? Uh, NYSERTA is not terribly concerned. If you've got other funding, because like the historic preservation is tackling so much else of the building. That putting ten K towards this relatively new insulation piece of it. You know, you're not like double dipping NYSERTA for energy efficiency funds. You're putting like discreet ten.
Comme belles things, right?
Yeah, okay, just part of that.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
That makes sense.
Um, no, you you, you run an issue sometimes if like you start a project. With a NYSERTA grant and then you wanna later go put more NYSERTA money towards it. Um, they don't always love that. There are ways that we can do it. Um, and so this is part of, uh, again, kind of where I come in is. The letter of commitment and the project scope can indicate that if we were to get future NYSERTA grants. Um, that we'd be able to apply them, maybe not directly to the insulation, but to other relevant parts of of this upgrade. So it doesn't lock us out. Um.
Is that something that you would incorporate into the letter of commitment?
I can, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I, I'm happy to take a pass at it because I. Uh, what's the word? I, so I, by way of introduction, I, this is what I do, uh. I, I'm at a corporate extension. I do this for Tompkins, Broome and Shenango Counties. So I'm paid by NYSERTA to help municipalities navigate the the program. Um, so I I third with y'all's blood, but essentially, right, you tell me where you want me to go.
Would you like to lead our emergency response?
Right, we, yeah, I mean, that would be a great project.
I don't know.
Maybe they don't pay you enough for that.
As long as he can get a one hundred thousand dollar NYSERTA grant. In order for the town to do the planning for the emergency planning.
That would be a big plan. Yeah, um, and we might wanna look at D E C for that or N D H S. Um, not for.
Hey, we're back resting, no, I guess.
Anyway, I didn't.
Yes, so if that's, again, if that's where you wanna put the money. Um, I'm absolutely happy to.
Yeah.
Come up with materials. Forwarded by the board. Again, you guys just let me know and I'll, I'll start.
Okay, cause I think, um. Reading the tea leaves, I think it's.
Sure.
Uh, it's done.
In that sense, yeah.
So, um, I I I will put that, I I will pass the resolution for the letter of commitment tonight.
Uh, and I will, I'll get the, um, I think I've just got your email. Is there a good one for review by?
You can, you can, if you wanna email all of us, just email, is it town underscore board or town board?
Not even sure.
Are you looking it up?
But you'll forward it to us.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, I can forward it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we have a town board email address as well.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I, I, um, I'll get that out for review. Um, all of the language will be. Based on what we've talked about. It's, you know, by no means final. You don't wanna review it, edit it.
Okay.
Most of it's pretty boilerplate, you know, saying to NYSERTA, we commit to doing X, Y, Z.
Perfect.
It's town board, it's just one word.
Just town board.
Town board.
Well, cheers y'all.
Thank you, thanks so much for your time.
Yeah, really appreciate it, Chris. Yeah, awesome. So. Yeah, thank you, Chris. Thanks. Take care, have a good night. So, um, can I get the resolution right now?
Yeah.
So I will offer a resolution. Um, of the authorized, the, the town board authorizes the supervisor to sign a letter of commitment. Uh, for the, um, C E C. Um, for utilization of the C E C grant funds. I think that's all I have, so. There's a second.
Second.
Second item. Do I need to abolish that resolution?
Do you have to say how much the grant's for or?
Ten thousand.
Okay.
Dollars.
It's just giving him the authority to sign them.
Giving me the authority.
Yeah, giving you the authority to sign it, so.
That's it, so. There's no further discussion. Call for vote. Call it fair. Opposed? Great, thank you. Um, so with that, I will move on to, um, to my report. Find it here. So I will mention in, uh, relation to the storm on August thirteenth, Governor Hochul issued a primary, uh. County disaster designation for seven, seven counties, including Tompkins, from the July tenth to the sixteenth storm damage. Um, such designation makes farm operations in these and contiguous, and I just spelled it, I might take the N out of continuous. Hi, Chris. Contiguous counties eligible for FSA emergency loans, providing other eligibility requirements are met. And we will be posting information on the website, so. Um, and I can send that out to town announcements as well, so. And I also, my second item is, um.
If that's something, maybe we could also send to the agriculture committee.
Already done.
Yeah. Send it out.
I sent it when you saw it there.
Okay. And, uh, yeah, in that regard, when I sent it today, I sent it to, um, Monica.
Oh, I did too.
Yeah, so I presume they know the conduits to reach the ag committee here.
Yeah.
But, yeah, okay. Great, thank you. So on Monday, Fernando De Aragon invited me to a meeting, um, with Leanne Kanda, who's a, um. Science professor in, um, uh, animal behavior at Ithaca College and Stephen Breeden, who is a master student at Cornell. Um, and if you may remember, Leanne has worked on the salamander migration on Thomas Road there and other roads, Ellis Hollow. Um, and they are, um, were inquiring about a, an idea for a wildlife crossing. On Thomas Road. Or a couple of crossings. So the crossings, quote unquote crossings are under the road crossings. Um, and they are, they're culverts. And they're not just tubes, they're, they're actually, um, that. Well, they can be different ways, but the one, one that I looked up was a, a man could crouch and go through it.
Like a flat bottom?
They're flat bottom.
They have like collectors, like. They have like collectors, like, big, like, collecting wall, the like.
Well, they, besides, yeah.
All the animals towards the, you know.
So, uh, Fernando said they've identified a, um, a D O T grant opportunity for this project. Um, um, that has an August twenty twenty five application deadline. Um, and they're putting it out there to see if, this is a town road. Um, so it'll be a town project, um. They, as the biologists involved in this, um, would put the grant together. Um, we would be the applicant and administer the project, um. So, um, the reason it's coming out now is cuz they, you know, we, we would want to, I would wanna offer a resolution. Um, if, if agreed to, um. To support the grant application, so that they could begin the work of putting it together and then submitting it, um. There are some other, um, so the, the grant, um, they, they estimated, you know, off the cuff. That this project might, might cost about five hundred thousand dollars, it's.
How many culverts is that?
Two, I think, two or three, two is what I think you thought, but two or three, um.
All in the town, or?
Just on Thomas.
Just on Thomas, right.
But all in our, all in Caroline, or some in?
All, all in Caroline.
Wow.
My understanding, so these are all questions.
It's right near that big wetland, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, so it's a twenty percent cost share, um, so that would be a hundred thousand dollars. That, that would be the, the cost share. But the cost share could be covered by other contributions, um, she mentioned U S Fish and Wildlife. In-kind, um, contributions or, um. Some kind of a campaign, yeah, crowdsourcing campaign.
Something like U S Fish and Wildlife would get on board, I've had them to my place and they were pretty open to stuff.
Yeah, cool, so, um.
And is this something a highway would do, or would we job out?
That, that would be a discussion thing to have, um, it, it's, I think it could be contracted out. Um, it's, it's not just, it's not a paving, you know, it's, it's a concrete culvert, it's a structure, there's a design. Um, I'm hoping, um, they shared design plans, I'm hoping that it's sort of. A plug and play thing where we wouldn't have to reengineer it.
Is Thomas Road a county road?
It's a town road.
It's a town.
I think, I think neighbors is another big factor.
What is that?
The neighbors, getting them on board.
So, um, yeah, and I think the neighbors would definitely be on board, um. One, one property owner, um, who owns land, uh, that she believes would be on the. Um, west forest's side owns, she owns the land and would be interested in donating it to the Finger Lakes Land Trust.
Okay.
So it could be public land, um, and we've talked about this in the past when we spoke with Finger Lakes Land Trust. Uh, just a day when I was mulling it over, I, I don't know what the probabilities are, but it, it could be. Uh, it, it might be an opportunity for, uh, parkland or something like that. Um. Yeah, so there might be some engagement with the Finger Lakes Land Trust, um. Anyway, I, I, I think it's an intriguing idea, uh, and opportunity. Um, I, you know, it's. It's another project, but it's, it's out there, Fernando didn't think construction would be till two thousand twenty seven, something like that. Um, would be fairly, it'd be staged, um. And it'd be kind of cool, so, um, I would, so my proposal, I would like to. Engage the watershed committee with this idea, they hosted Leanne for a presentation before. And, uh, I think they'd be interested in, in looking at this. They meet, uh, and I think it's, it's after, their next meeting is after our September business meeting. So, um. You know, we could, I could give you details and we could discuss it further at the September meetings. And then maybe, maybe put it forward for consideration at, at an early October meeting is, is what I was thinking, so.
I think it's a great opportunity, I mean, there was, you know, we tried to shut that road down first, you know, during. Uh, major amphibian crossing times and things like that, I'm glad to, I think it's, it's a good answer, and if we can get funding, I think we should do it.
In terms of the town cost share, I just want us to be judicious because we've got. So many projects, big projects in front of us that, that I think we need to keep in mind prioritization. I mean, if this gets put out to twenty twenty seven, that makes me feel a little bit better. But that's also about the same time that we'd be finishing up with the highway barn conceivably. Uh, around that time, so it's just something that I think we need to continue to.
Yeah.
Keep in mind.
My hope would be to, um. I mean, I think more than hope, but my, my goal would be to, to cover that twenty percent cost share, um, with. Other funds, U S Fish and Wildlife, or, or voluntary contributions or something like that, and I think, I think it's very possible.
If you can pull that off, all the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Is, is the, um, the trail project potentially in that same window and? The, the opportunity, and there's a lot of challenges there, but the opportunity might be, it'd be similar contractors. Maybe doing that work, it's cul, the culverts and, and digging and it's all kind of possible.
It's possible, I mean, it's, it's all up in the air, we don't know if we're gonna get the grant for the planning, right?
It's definitely. But I would say that it's definitely in this.
Yeah, it's definitely about that ton, yeah.
Yeah.
That's true.
So, okay.
I mean, we know there's broad community support for this particular project because people have been very, very participatory. And overseeing this migration on a annual basis, so.
Yeah, I, I think, well, this, the grad student, Stephen, he, well, Leanne too, uh, I think engages, um. Schoolchildren and things, but, um, Stephen has a, what do you call it, I don't have, I didn't write it down here, but. Um, it's an amphibian patrol, um, and, and so they go out when the conditions are right and, and. And collect data and, and patrol for, for amphibians, but.
That's great, I mean, there are certain nights where it's warm and.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the spring, that we go really slowly and dodge frogs, can, you know, on the way.
And you still can't miss them.
No, I know, there are a lot of frogs out there.
Great, great, okay, thank you, any other thoughts about that, so I will.
You'll pursue it.
Talk further about it, I'll talk to Leanne more about the funding and, so, great, cool, thank you, um.
Actually really exciting, so.
Yeah, I think so.
Ecologists, it's actually.
So I, um, yesterday attended a, uh, some association of town supervisors meeting by zoo. And they've had some of these and I missed them cuz they just got by me, but this one, it was on budgeting and, and anyway, somehow I remembered, it was great.
Yeah.
So, um, one thing, one of the, uh, A O T attorneys brought up was that they're, um, as you remember, when we. When, when, when we, for the, for this year's A O T meeting, one of the resolutions was about. Establish authority for towns to set their own speed limits, and that's something we repeatedly get. So, um, they are planning to double down on lobbying for this. So, um, Sarah, uh, solicited, uh, case studies. She said, you know, if you can send me any stories, so, I think we have a story, right?
We have lots of stories, yeah.
We have lots of stories, but at least we have one ongoing and recent one.
Mm-hmm.
That, um, that we can do, so I'll, I'll send that to her, if anybody has any thoughts or wants to write anything, just send it.
Right.
I, I think it's a, this, the Cottington Road review happened pretty quickly compared to.
A year.
A year, yeah, yeah, um, like the one on, uh, Landon and Lounsbury, I think it was longer than a year. You know, and when I asked about it, I was told there were just like two or three people up in Syracuse to cover all of Southern New York, so they had a backlog, I mean, this is not. This is not working, you know, the, the. And, and also it doesn't take into, like, the Cottington Road, I was curious. So we were just asking in Caroline, what about the Danby section, you know, I've been in contact with some people who are. You know, further down the road towards Ithaca, where their child was hit, uh, they don't live in Caroline, um, a number of years ago. Pets have been killed, people go, just fly through, so when they're looking, and we, on our request for town, one of my questions was. Did they look at the accidents further down on Cottington Road, right? So they, they go down to forty-five months, actually go back up to fifty-five, but then you cross over to the other town. I, I don't know if their study was limited to Caroline, that's what I wonder.
I think, but I think that most, I was just out there the other day, and I think most of. The road coming from Ithaca until you hit the Caroline Town Road is forty-five.
It's forty-five now.
Most of it is forty-five.
Alright.
Yeah, up to Banks Road.
Up to Banks.
Okay, and then it was up to fifty, alright.
Yeah.
Yep.
But it is.
Be better, might even be up to now.
Yeah.
So, but, yeah.
Yeah.
But I have a call into the stage just to follow up on.
But it takes, it's not a working system when it takes that long for review to happen.
Yeah.
And, and it's an old story, but we asked for review to happen a long time ago on Valley Road. And they came on a Thursday when it was sleeting and said there were no pedestrians. And it just happened that, you know, it was sleeting in February and nobody was walking around, so.
Makes sense for local, you just found.
Yes, it does, local, and not them coming in for a half hour.
Totally agree, so that's great.
Random day.
So, um. Great, so we should submit something, right?
Yes.
Great, okay, cool. So I'll draft something and send it around, we can, we can build it up or whatever. Um, and that was a really great meeting for a number of reasons, just because. All of a sudden you realize this stuff happens in other towns, so it was, it was really great.
Yeah.
So, um, and then, um, I just put in my notes that, um, Distributed Sun, the. Um, Community Solar Company is going to give a presentation next Tuesday, the twenty-seventh, to the review board. Um, and they gave one, they gave one on the ninth, that recording and their, their poster board. Is on the website and it's also next door in the town offices. Um, so that's, that project is going before the review board for review, um, and. Pretty big project, and that's my report, any questions? I probably forgot a lot of stuff, but. Thank you, thanks. Um. Jessie.
Hi.
You wanna, you have anything for us?
Yeah, sure, I was just gonna mention that the clerk's office will be closed on Labor Day, that's the second of September. And then the office will be going back to its regular, uh, resume office hours, which is Monday through Thursday, eight to two. And the clerk's report for July revenues includes, uh, thirteen fishing licenses. Twenty-two dog licenses, seven building permits, and one site plan application fee.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Jessie?
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay. And I don't think we have a code officer report, uh, or the code officer tonight, um. I will, I did, um, speak to Bob today about the generator issues at the highway barns, and he did report that. There's a, there's a generator in place, um, for the fuel pumps, and, um. I got clarification on some sort of switch issue for the main generator, which does work, but they have to monkey with it. So I, we agreed that that needs to be fixed ASAP, and he's gonna find, he's already been looking into. Finding an electrician to, to come work on it, so. Um, and then, um. I guess I can sort of indirectly report this, so, um, in the vouchers, that I noticed there was the, um. Um, the large charge, the large payment for paving, um, for, or oil and stone on Baylor Road, so. Uh, I guess a lot of work was done on Baylor, if I'm not mistaken, so I just inferred that from the contract.
I'm not sure they hadn't done it, so.
Okay.
There was a lot of work done on Baylor Extension.
Oh, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's what that, is that what it is?
They were there yesterday.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, and there, there has been ditching done on Baylor.
Ditching.
Okay.
Ditching, but there was a lot of paving on Baylor Extension.
Okay. Great, thank you for that clarification, um, and then.
This morning, just.
I don't, is.
Does Dan Klein come sometimes?
Uh, he does, and, uh, I'm away from the Zoom visual, he's not with us tonight, so that's too bad, but. He's, he's, he's usually here, actually, so that's it for the reports, um. I'll move on to the first item of business, it's the resolution to award a contract for the Six Mile Creek at Banks Road maintenance project. Um, and I'll just put this forward for discussion, um. Um, I will precede all this by saying that at this point, the project will happen next year. Um, so, um. We'll line it up, but I think we have a good contractor for the work here, um, so. Um.
Mark, could you just explain what it is?
Yeah, okay, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, so, um. Well, upstream on Six Mile Creek on Banks Road, um, there was work done about ten years ago, or more, more than ten years ago. To stabilize the creek, uh, repair the road, FEMA funding, um, pay for a lot of that. And, um, Storm sent them have dislodged the upstream, in-stream rock structure, J hook called. So that's important to the engineering of the entire thing. So that needs to be restructured, um. And did you guys, have you guys had a chance to look at the plans for that project that were, okay, they're on the website, um. But maybe it's, uh, you, you can park there where Debbie has parking place and walk upstream. Um, and go quarter mile upstream, you can see that, and then you, you walk down. So this project runs from, from that point all the way almost to Banks Road to the, you know. To where you park, I think, so, and it's in, it's in this, in this request for proposals, it was put out. As a base bid for rebuilding of the rock structure and, um, creek bed. Um, and then, um, a second part, which was as the stream comes down, it bends to the right, so off to the left. Is kind of this big flood plain, and then you get to Banks Road, and that's where it washed out. Um, but now there's, it's grown up with a lot of, um, perennial growth and stuff, but it's a pretty large flat, um. Flat area, so, but I think some of that has, has degraded a little bit, so it's part, that's. Part of the project is to, to rebuild that and replant it, and then down at the end, um. Kind of bends back, and, um, the creek has moved over, um, to the left. A little bit, so they, Tim and I walked out there the other day, and I, it doesn't look to me like it's actively moving now, but. Creeks move over time, so there's.
There was a lot of water over there.
Yeah.
Unusually, this time of year.
So there's some stone, quote, stone tow protection they're proposing there, so the, um. The lower bid was thirty-six thousand nine hundred for the base part. Then an additional fifty-two thousand for the stream bank grading and planting on that left side, um. The elective one, and then five thousand hundred and thirty-five for the, the second elective. Which is stream channel and stream bed grading and stone tow protection. So, um.
What is stone tow protection?
I as, I assume it's just. I as, I assume it's just, um, stone protection at the. At the toe of the project.
If you, if you go down there, the other side of the creek. Has. What's probably stone protection all the way down.
Okay.
And this side doesn't have that. That's what I'm assuming.
Yeah, that's not right, yeah. So there are a couple things, so, the bid is not, um. The bid wasn't difficult to decide, the other bid was more than twice this amount, so, um. Or some, or about twice this amount, um. The, um, Soil and Water and the City of Ithaca have pledged funds to support this. Um, and this year those funds have been pushed elsewhere, because it's gotten too late in the year. So, we need to figure out. John, John and Angel were asking how much the town would be willing to contribute. But the second question is. Are you showing the stream?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So you guys were down looking at the other day?
We ran down at lunchtime, I think yesterday, or that's.
But thi- this whole area all the way up, it was worked on, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Before.
Before.
We went swimming in there this, uh, summer. We went swimming at that particular spot this summer.
Yeah, cool. So I, you know, um.
Swimming.
Waiting.
Waiting.
So there's, uh, you know, I, um. I guess, I, I, I mean, I feel like if we have questions that we have time. We can, we can ask those questions, but we don't have to. Put this resolution forward tonight. Um, and that's, that's actually kind of where I'm at. Um, but I did ask. John Negley, who's the Director of Soil and Water, he, he recommended the full. Project, which would be. I didn't add it up on here, but it's like ninety-four thousand dollars, something like that, be almost a hundred thousand dollar.
So I'm, I'm confused, it's too late to get the soil and water funding for this year?
Well, so, so they, they get. Allocation every year, so. So yeah, this year they put it to other projects, so they need to, they need to know. What do they need to look for next year for this project?
So this project wouldn't be happening until next year?
Yes, correct. Correct, that's why I'm not, um, in a tizzy to. To pass this resolution tonight, if we have questions, or if we have concerns.
And as I recall just from conversations that we had in passing. There's still a question of the amount of cost share.
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, they're asking us. So, I, you know, and, and so. You know, like, if we decided, yeah, so we just, it's. The cost share amount. I- in my view would change depending on how big the project was, um. But, um. I think in principle it should just be a percentage of the project with the cap. So if the project, say the project were, we did the whole thing, ninety-four thousand and. You know, John felt like, that's what the engineering said. And I, I get it, um. And that. That if we tried to do less, that would make it difficult for him to justify. The funding partners. Um, the funding partners, the City of Ithaca, and then Soil and Water Board of Directors. So, um. So yeah, I think when we think about cost share, we should think about. The whole project and, um, then if we decide. And so if, if, if we're comfortable with that, we can set a cost share amount tonight. And, um, with the cap, and then go from there. And I, I have thought twenty-five percent seems like, like. When we did W two IP with the state for Ercus Road, that's twenty-five percent town cost share. Yeah.
I, I mean, I would be very comfortable with that as long as we can cap it. Uh, you know, the, the scary thing is if we commit to doing it twenty-five percent cost share, and last year, next year. The contractor changes the bid. You know, we don't want to get tongue out to dry, but it sounds like it's pretty stable.
Yeah.
And JB Excavation has done things like this before, I mean, it was quite a bit lower than the other. Engineering companies. Their experience in it.
Yeah, they've done a lot of work for the town.
Okay.
Yeah, they did work on Buffalo Road, uh, Creek, and, um.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Um, was there a particular person or entity that suggested to do this? In my sense of this. Protecting both future. Private land damage and public. Infrastructure damage, is that, is that the purpose?
Um, so. Soil and Water suggested it.
Okay.
Um, they noted that. Pointed out that this is, um, and I think, I think Barry.
Water is accounting?
Yeah.
Yeah, just making.
So Barry Goodrich had noticed, I, I'm not, you know, we were aware that this. Instream structure had been dislodged, um, so. Um, they pointed out and asked if the town would be willing to. To contribute, and I said, yeah.
But their, but their reasoning.
Couple of years.
Their reasoning is because it's. Ecologically a factor, but also it's the city's water.
That's one reason, so, and that's why I think that, that's where the City of Ithaca's contribution comes in. Um, Banks Road is a town, Rosette's town, infrastructure. The bridge is county. So that's a county concern.
Mm-hmm.
Um, right, Frank?
Yeah.
First bridge I did when I was a legislator.
The first bridge you did?
Yep, I remember when it was out.
And Lounsbury was. About five years, eight years later.
Wow.
The, uh.
There was a history there of it getting damaged.
I realized, who was?
Jake, the same.
Oh, JB's, yeah.
So he's got a lot of positive, uh, vibes, plus he has his own quarry.
Yeah, his own quarry.
So if, if he saves the town some money.
Yeah.
On quarried stone that's needed.
Yeah.
And of course, those two veins are there, I chair the Water Resources Council. But the, uh. Uh, those two upstream veins are there to slow the, the velocity of the water now. And it protects the bridge, it protects the town's road. There's a lot of positives, I'm glad to hear that the city is, if I heard you right.
You heard, you heard me right.
Can, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there, I thought I heard you say that the project wouldn't take place until next year.
That's correct.
Will they, will there be a hold on the funds that John is talking about from Soil and Water?
No, so, uh, it, so he had to expend the funds this year. So he, he had like thirty-seven for this project. Uh, and, you know, he's pretty confident he can get that for next year. Um, but he just. He wants to know, you know, what we're grappling with is the town contribution. Do you have any experience with that, with the local share? For something like this?
Used to be, uh, ten percent.
Oh.
Around, uh, don't quote me.
That makes me feel better.
Well, the other thing is, the, there were times when they would consider in-kind. Contributions, so. Yeah, I'm going back, I think Cindy was the Congress Superintendent when we did it the last time. Uh, or it may have even been Scott. Because we did that a hundred years ago. And there, and there might be a, an in-kind contribution that the town could, you should run that by Negley though. Uh, is he providing the majority of the funds?
Who's that?
Soil and Water.
Uh, well. It's a significant portion de- depending on the scope of the project.
How was based, uh, well, I noticed you had it broken into three different.
Yeah.
A main, uh, a main immediate or.
Yeah.
The first needing, then the two options.
Right.
So it looks like it's touching a hundred thousand now, of course.
That's correct, that's right, yeah. Twenty, ninety-four or so.
He might be getting the money, we, we also tapped the Environmental Protection Fund. And we were able to get some money out of there and Flopa. The, uh.
This is, he is using Flopa.
He's using Flopa money?
Yes.
What, why is it that he needs to spend the money this year?
That's just what he told me, I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
I was, I, because we used, when I was on the Soil and Water. We used to be able to make three to five year commitments. And set up contracts where you could draw. As it needed it. Uh, again, I haven't been on that board in a long time, so I don't know what the process is now. But. It, it may be worthwhile finding out. Can he, can he allocate? I, I don't know, Mark.
Well, I, I don't know the details of what John does, so I just, I can't answer really, but he has. You know.
One, one of those veins is in, that's the vein you're talking about repair. That's being. Needs to be re, reestablished.
Yeah. Yeah. So, great, thank you.
Well, because of one concern, if the City of Ithaca is interested in a contribution. Should you be concerned about what their commitment for. Their future budget is as well, if they're making a financial contribution?
Um, John, it's a, it's a set amount.
Is John working all that?
Yeah. That's, that's true, John, so, yeah, so he's, he knows what the amount is, it doesn't matter how big the project is, it's a, it's a set amount.
The original bridge there used to be upstream. You remember that, or you're too young?
I'm too young for that, I'm way too young.
But it was upstream, it used to come right next to somebody's driveway. And we moved it to where it is now. When, when we rebuilt it.
Okay.
Anyway, sorry to get on time.
No, I'm happy to have your background there, so. Um.
Negotiate the cost share and then we'll. Move forward, right?
Sure. Do, do you, do you want to set that tonight or think about it?
I just don't know what's appropriate.
Yeah.
I mean, do you need to do more, or straighten with him first?
Yeah, I think.
Kind of sounds like.
I think, I think so, I, and I knew this would happen, it's like, I was, I was trying to get more guidance on this and. So let me do that, because. I think we do have the flexibility, uh, the additional time, so I'll get back to questions and then.
Mark, excuse me, my girlfriend, can I ask you one more question? If you delay the project. Is it wise to get ahold of JB? To find out what their timing would be if the project is delayed?
I already did.
Oh.
Yeah, and he said. Good. I likely can't get it done this year, so. Yeah, so, yeah. But, yeah, um. Okay, thank you, um, oh wow, so, um, twenty twenty-five budget discussion, I mean, um.
Get on, buddy, good night.
Good night, thank you.
There's a convention going on right now.
We know.
Why we want to get out of here?
Yeah, you may not know about.
Well, yeah, we do know about it, yeah, so.
But I just watched the highlights.
I watched it in the morning with my colleague.
I want you live, which is why I want to be out of here by nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
You too, Frank. Uh, thank you very much, so, um. So we don't need to, um. So, um. He's, he's on the board, um, so. So, um, I don't have anything to like, a spreadsheet or anything, but I did go through and. Stick numbers in, so I started doing the budget work, and I sent out, uh, budget requests. And I think I sent a bunch of spreadsheets to you guys, did everybody get them?
Yeah.
I saw some.
But it was unclear what we were supposed to do with them.
Yeah, I mean, you just look, if you look at the spreadsheet, you can see what was spent. Two years ago, and, and, and what we budgeted for this year. And where we're at right now, and, and then you can think about, well, what do we pay for on this line? If, if it means anything to you, because you gotta know what the budget line numbers mean. So don't worry about it too much, I mean.
Looks like we're in pretty good shape, though.
I think we're in pretty good shape, the one thing I'm really, I am concerned about is, um, so we have. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're building fund balance, I don't.
Right.
Because we need it, we're gonna need it for these projects, we need it for this project, and just, we need enough money on hand. That we have, so for cash flow.
Right.
Um. And. Yeah, um. My, tomorrow night I'll have a informational meeting with the Health Consortium. Uh, the Board of Directors. So presumably I'll get, um, an inkling of what the health insurance premium. Increase will be, um, will pay about. I noticed the other day, um, at least like two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. A year for health insurance premiums. So, um.
Yeah, I read in the paper this morning that county tax receipts are down.
What, what kind of that, people move away, or?
People are spending less. Spending less.
So those are sales taxes.
Oh, 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 sales tax, of course.
Yeah. So, yeah, it, um. So, yeah, I'll have more information next time on what, what that's, I saw. Something that, um. Retirement is gonna go up from two to fifteen percent retirement payments in the retirement system. So that's, that's likely to be.
A lot.
A big number, um. I mean, it's, it's, it's just plain as day that, um. During my, during my tenure as supervisor, we've always stayed under the tax cap, but we will forever. Because the numbers, you know, when you have at least six percent increase a year in health insurance and. Um. Inflation is over three percent or whatever, this, like, it, you know, so. We'll try, and we'll earnestly try, um. And I need to, so let's see, for the broadband project. Um. We'll be getting budget numbers, I think by the end of this month from, from Ryan, so. Uh, but I don't think those are gonna affect the town budget at this point, so.
It will in the future, but I thought we got mostly paid for with a grant.
Yeah, so you, you're spot on, so we've got it mostly paid for by the grant, so we're really lucky. Um, Dryden is working off bond payments now for what they've done. And, um. So, yeah, we are, and we're also gonna do some things. I believe, at least, you know, if we can get people signed up earlier, we're gonna have revenue flow. Um. Feeding in, we'll have revenue from the project, um, so. Yeah.
Need more businesses.
Well, this, I tell you, this, this AOT meeting was really interesting, some of the town, I think a couple of towns up around Saratoga Springs and that part of the state. They're, they, they survive totally on, on sales tax. Isn't that amazing?
Yeah.
So, and, but it was, it was really interesting towns talking about emergency services. Uh, Wayne County just implemented countywide ambulance.
Oh, really?
Um. Struggles with, um. Keeping wages up on par, so. I will say, um, that.
We're not alone.
We're not alone, and that's in my thinking for my budget for this year, so I want to be. Sensitive to that. We're not alone, and that's in my thinking for my budget for this year, so I want to be sensitive to that. Make sure that we budget properly to.
By the way, an aside, just since you mentioned, I happened to chat with the rapid response guy the other night.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, and he said that they had, I think it was close to six hundred and fifty calls.
Wow.
Since they started.
Six hundred and fifty?
Yeah.
Sorry, six hundred and fifty what?
Calls, they responded, which is a lot.
Which emergency response person were you talking to? In the truck here?
In the truck.
That's cool.
Um, so, and so that's just during the day, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's kind of why.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Yeah, I have those numbers that, um, Joe presented at our last subcommittee meeting.
A lot higher than that.
Yeah. Yeah, that's cool. So I also put on, without providing any really review of town board meeting process.
Yes.
I, I, I guess, do people have questions about that or, or thoughts about it, I mean. Um, I, I gave you some printout stuff, right?
Yes.
And you're, yeah, and you've dealt with boards before.
Yeah, so far it seems to be pretty effective.
Yeah. I mean, I guess. To me, the main things are, you know, listening to people. Giving everyone a chance to speak, um. And I think, yeah, I have no complaints, I think we're, we're doing okay, we're doing well.
Yep, there was a suggestion to move the comments to the end.
The.
Of the meeting.
Privilege of the floor.
Privilege of floors, yeah.
Yeah.
But I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't either. Who suggested that? You mean somebody in the public?
Yeah, people, various residents, I'm like, why don't you have it after, after we know what's going on, but I think nobody really wants to stay until nine o'clock and then it's.
I think that you asked most members in public, they, they wouldn't.
I don't think they would like that.
I am curious, though, that, that was the guy from the shanty?
Yeah.
That was Chris, yeah.
Chris, I've never met Chris.
Okay.
I'm wondering why he came.
He, he likes to come in, he knows.
Chill, he didn't have a comment or a suggestion or I'm wondering if he left. He just watches?
Yeah, he did, he checked, he was listening to the discussion.
Okay. I know there was some terrible things said in Facebook recently about his.
Yeah, he's, he's going to be the other day.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I haven't, yeah, I haven't seen him.
Oh.
But, you know, it's, uh, the same people that. So.
It is, but.
Huh?
Same old, same old, still.
I mean, I, I was hoping he'd stay so I could. I don't know, you know, so, hey, I know you can, so, yeah, that's.
He's great, um, so.
That's.
Um.
I did notice when I came in yesterday that he plays, like, he plays music pretty loudly, and I just wanted if that was a problem with neighbors. During the day.
Hasn't been.
Yeah.
Nobody's said anything about it. Yeah.
He, he seems like a nice enough guy, that somebody said to something.
Yeah, he's on great terms with, um, Sally Partridge and, and Bethany Gray.
Yeah, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten myself organized enough to go out and try his food, but I want to.
Well, I just got some today, I've got it for lunch. Yeah, that's good.
I heard it's really good, I think I've had some, but I don't know how I get it, yeah.
All right, so moving on, um. Feel like I'm missing something, but, um.
Pay the bills.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at, it seemed, it seemed too soon, but I, I think, I think we better do it, so. I will offer a resolution to, um. Approve the, the payment of, of the town bills.
Do the transfers first, sorry.
Oh, thanks, Jesse, yeah, here, I'm pulling up my thing now, so it's, I emailed it to you guys, but it's not on what the printout is here, but anyway. Offer the following transfer resolution, um. These are the transfers, twelve hundred, I don't know, should I read through them all, they're really boring. But twelve hundred from town hall equipment to town hall IT, IT, we have maxed out, that's something I want to evaluate for the budget. Uh, so it is worth thinking about. Um, twenty seven twenty five from contingency to the highway barn. And four hundred and seventy five, so that, that twenty seven twenty five is because we got a bill from Lobella. For the planning for the highway barn project. We did, and so, um, I, I, I meant to update you that I did get an email from, um, David K.
Oh, yeah.
Saying they would have something to assume and they've had some turnover and, sorry, so. Um, yeah, and then four hundred and seventy five contingency to the town barn improvements, that's the project. That the highway department did on the expansion of that, um, and the, the two additions on each side of the existing barn. So that, that.
So Jonathan, there was a faucet hut, an old faucet hut that's falling in for, for salt? No, for storage.
Oh, okay.
And what they did is they winged on. Another outbuilding that they'd already kind of retrofitted recently. So they built new storage and stuff, so they're able to move all of the stuff. One building to the other, so the faucet hut can be torn down because it's a safety answer.
The faucet hut's falling in.
Good, thank you, yeah.
All right.
Eight hundred and fifty contingency to history contractual, they are out of money. One hundred from, uh, general repairs to general repairs overtime. Three thousand from general repairs to machinery personnel services. And then twelve fifty three point six four from workers' comp to unemployment, that's for Lynn Whittaker's. Uh, unemployment claim. And those are the transfers, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Bravely seconded by Kate, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now I'll offer a resolution to pay the bills in the amount of fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety eight dollars and eighteen cents for A Fund. Hundred and seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirty one dollars and thirty six cents for DA Fund and six hundred and two dollars and nine cents for the streetlight fund.
Second.
Seconded by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Jonathan, did you do the vouchers, did you do the vouchers?
I did.
Did you enjoy that?
Oh, no, I didn't, I, I voted, I voted, but I didn't, no, we, we, I missed our, our meeting and. I, I guess I'll join the next person, or am I the next person?
No, you, you still have to do it, right?
Yeah, you should just do them, just.
Yeah, so.
Review them.
I did mine, you signed, so then, yeah, we need one more signature, which is you.
So I need to just go in tomorrow and sign, look at it and sign?
Just go through them and, yeah.
All right.
So.
I initially, what time do you want to go in tomorrow? I could, I want to see Jesse, so I could.
Uh, I mean, look.
It's got to be before two if I'm going to see Jesse.
Before two? When do you, what's, what's a good time earl- earlier or later for you?
Uh, I don't have anything planned tomorrow until the afternoon, so.
All right, eleven?
Eleven would be okay, yeah.
Oh, there, there's the historic plan meeting.
Thank you, yeah.
Is that usually go an hour? Or more?
It'll probably go more, no, about it.
Okay, so it's eleven.
Eleven's good.
Yep.
All right, I'll meet you down there.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, that we have a, a town hall meeting tomorrow. Great. So, um, I'd like to offer approvals of the minutes of August seventh, um, I found them. Great, any, any comments? No. Great. The minutes of August seventh are approved and appreciated, thanks, Jesse.
Thank you.
And, um. So let's see, so. I think, I think we're finished. So, yeah, we have a town, um, a town hall restoration meeting tomorrow morning.
Oh, good.
Get forward on that, um.
Jonathan, thank you very much for jumping on that.
You're welcome.
It's really helpful.
Yeah, so wait, what comes to town restoration meeting, is that ten?
Ten, do we set ten, is that you are?
Yep.
Okay. Now I'm just thinking about, you know, meeting him at eleven, but that's okay, it doesn't matter if you're, go over, because I want to talk to Jesse about something.
For a long time.
Yeah, but I might not have to be the whole time either, I'm just trying to get to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People involved and.
Be great to have you there, so, great. I did mention to Cal, and I think he's, I think he was, he's going to come, so.
Great.
Oh, great.
That's great.
So, yeah.
Great.
Great, um. I will offer a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Kate, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, great, we are adjourned at eight forty two P M.
Yeah.
We'll watch over.